This new ordinance for burning will pass, I'm assuming. And in that event, do the citizens have any recourse on any ordinance that this council passes that they, an overwhelming majority don't like? Can they?
Well, first of all, it would have to, good question, sir. It would have to pass tonight, which is just first reading.
Right.
And then two weeks from now, it would come up again for second reading.
I'm going to defer to the city attorney. I do not believe that a ordinance or any actions taken by the council that go through the appropriate channels and are voted on, is there a recourse such as a petition drive or whatever?
The only thing I can think of, Mayor, would be if the citizen believes that it's unconstitutional in some manner, that the citizen could then violate the ordinance and provoke a notice of violation and challenge the constitutionality in court.
Okay. Thank you.
That would be a method of recourse.
Okay. Thank you, sir. Anyone else this evening, sir?
My name's James Eschman. Been a lifelong resident of Rock Falls. I'm 80 years old, and the way we've been burning, I don't know how I lived that long. So, I'm just here to say I'm against burning. I know a lot of councilmen, I watched that television last week, or two weeks ago, that's why I'm here. I've seen it on television. First time I've ever seen it on television, the council. And I know a lot of councilmen say their ward is for the burn. This isn't a ward thing. It's a moral thing. There are thousands and thousands of smart people who say we shouldn't be burning. But they think, what's the count now? 196 countries signed that agreement that would try to stop global warming. Of course, we're not in it anymore, but...
That is a very valid point, Mr. Eschman.
I had to put that in there. But I just, I know you guys and ladies like to go by what your people in your wards think, but that's fine. But sometimes you've got to stop that and just do the right thing. That's all I have to say. Thank you very much.
Thank you, sir.
Anyone else? Hearing none, we'll move on. First order of business is proclamation for the 125th anniversary of the Salvation Army. We don't see anyone. Is there anyone secretly here for the Salvation Army? Okay, we'll still go ahead and read the proclamation and go through the approval, if you would, please.
Whereas Salvation Army's only business in this community of Whiteside County, Illinois, as everywhere, is still human business. Undertaken with joy for the family of humankind to the greater glory of God, and whereas the Salvation Army serves the people of Rock Falls and Whiteside County with unshakable faith in all, no matter how desperate the situation, and views all people as people with possibilities. Whereas the Salvation Army acts on behalf of all of the residents of our community with no prerequisites, nor expecting any thanks, yet nonetheless welcoming community support. Now therefore, I, William B. Wescott, Mayor of Rock Falls, Illinois, do hereby proclaim and recognize June 7, 2017, as celebration of the 125th anniversary of the Salvation Army in Whiteside County, and urge all citizens to join me in saluting the steadfast men and women who are working to bind up the broken-hearted and renew the heart of our community by their quiet service of compassion. It is witness thereof that I have here to set my hand and cause the seal of the City of Rock Falls, Illinois, to be affixed the sixth day of June 2017.
Chair would entertain a motion to approve the proclamation as presented.
Second.
Motion by Mr. Folsom, seconded by Mr. Snow, to approve the 125th anniversary of the Salvation Army in Whiteside County proclamation. Any discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, the same. That motion carries. Community affairs. Bethany?
Good evening. I'm Bethany from the Rock Falls Chamber, for those of you that are out there, if you don't know. Last time I came, I had like 30 things to tell you, and right now it's June, so I have really one thing to tell you, and it's just about summer slash. Robin, if you would kindly, let's go down the line there. Right now, the Chamber is working very hard on summer slash. It's a very large community event that we have here on the riverfront, and we're thankful to the city, to Rock Falls Tourism, to all the people that make it happen. Last year, we had about 100 businesses that participated in the event, including nonprofits as well, who really helped make it all happen. We have some new things that we've added this year. A family movie night on Friday, and we're pretty excited about that. That's going to be great. It'll be free down there on the riverfront. And then, we are just kind of having a lot of fun things on Saturday, Princess and Superhero Day, there's an Uptown Pub Crawl, and then fireworks sponsored by Comcast over the river on Saturday night. So we definitely have a lot going on with that. Does anybody have any questions for me on that particular event? Okay, that was pretty easy. So, the other thing I just wanted to share with you is that the Chamber is working on the Sescuis Centennial Parade, and I have some good news for you, that at this time, we have just about 30 registrations, which is really exciting because a lot of those registrations are people who have never participated in a Chamber parade before. And normally, if we look at an event like Hometown Holidays, we run about 50 registrations, so I think this is going to be a really big, exciting time. And just wanted to share with you that if you have the opportunity to invite anybody to the parade, we would definitely appreciate it. It's Aug-, sorry, August, I almost said October, we're nowhere near there. August 5, and the parade steps off at 10:30. We do have all the registration forms on the website, and then we have them in our office as well.
Where's that parade going to start?
Starts by McDonald's on 10th Street, and it goes down 1st Avenue, turns left on 2nd Street and West 2nd Street, and it ends there, just around the farmer's market.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Anybody else with anything for Bethany? Thank you, ma'am.
Thank you.
Next item on the agenda for the council's consideration is a consent agenda. Does anyone on the council request any removal of the consent agenda item? Hearing none, sir, if you would, please.
Approval of the minutes of the May 16, 2017 regular council meeting. Approval of the bills as presented, and renewal of the IDNR license number 3093 for the operation and maintenance of electrical transmission lines across the Hennepin Canal, the five-year agreement in the amount of $1,100.
Make a motion to approve the consent agenda.
Second.
Motion by Mr. Shuneman, seconded by Mr. Logan, to approve the consent agenda and its items as presented. Any discussion? Hearing none, roll call, please.
Alderman Reitzel?
Yes.
Alderman Logan?
Yes.
Alderman Snow?
Yes.
Alderman Kuhlmeier?
Yes.
Alderman Shuneman?
Aye.
Alderman Kleckler?
Yes.
Alderman Folsom?
Yes.
Alderman Sabaka?
Yes.
Eight aye.
Next item on the agenda, excuse me, is ordinance is for first reading. The chair is going to remove item 1, 2, and 6 for separate votes. Did either members of the council have any objections to 3, 4, and 5? With 1, 2, and 6 removed for individual votes, Mr. Clerk, if you would, read 3, 4, and 5, please.
Approval of ordinance 2017-2320, amending section 32 of the Rock Falls Municipal Code for changes to the electric utility rates. Approval of ordinance 2017-2321, prevailing wage ordinance 2017. Approval of ordinance 2017-2322, fiscal year 18 appropriation ordinance.
Move for the adoption of those three ordinances.
Second, the motion.
For the first reading. Motion by Mr. Kuhlmeier, seconded by Mr. Shuneman, for items 3, 4, and 5 on the ordinance for first reading only. Any objections or discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, the same. Items 3, 4, and 5 passed. To item 1.
Approval of ordinance 2017-2317, adding Article 6 to Chapter 20, open burning.
Make a motion to approve 2017-2317 for first reading.
Second. Motion by Mr. Snow, seconded by Mr. Logan, to approve ordinance 2017-2317, adding section 6 to Chapter 20, open burning, for first reading only. Roll call. A yes vote is in favor of passing the ordinance, a no vote is a vote to not pass it.
Alderman Reitzel?
Yes.
Alderman Logan?
Yes.
Alderman Snow?
Yes.
Alderman Kuhlmeier?
No.
Alderman Shuneman?
Yes.
Alderman Kleckler?
No.
Alderman Folsom?
No.
Alderman Sabaka?
No.
Four aye.
Well, here we are again. Four votes for, and four votes against. Before the chair, and this is for everyone listening at home, one of the few times the mayor gets to vote. Before I do cast my vote, I just would like to say this, that for the people that are here tonight in the audience, and for the people that are at home, for all the people that called in, for all the people that stopped by, whether you were for or against it, you came forward and you verbalized your opinions on issues. And having been in this council chambers for many years on many different issues, that is a very nice thing to have happen. Okay? So, having said that, this has been a highly contested issue. Those folks that are in favor of continuing the burn have done a good job of getting out and making their voices heard, and I would just like to say that we also did hear, though, because there's always two sides to a story, that we did hear from a lot of people who were against that opinion. And that's a good thing, too, to have opposing sides. Before I cast my vote, though, I'd just like to say, I've heard a lot during these discussions that we, as aldermen, excuse me, you guys, aldermen, have an important responsibility to listen to your constituents. I could not disagree more. But I also would remind everyone that the constituents alone, even if the majority is in favor of something, there are other considerations that you have to make in favor of the city. And many times that happens, when the constituents come forward in favor of something, and then we vote no. That's called governance. That's what we're here for. And to that end, I cast my vote in favor of passing this ordinance on a five to four decision. Item 2, please.
Approval of ordinance 2017-2318, amending section 32-510, burning.
Make a motion to approve 2017-2318.
Second. Motion by Mr. Snow, seconded by Mr. Logan, to approve ordinance 2017-2318, amending section 32-510, burning. Roll call.
Alderman Reitzel?
Yes.
Alderman Logan?
Yes.
Alderman Snow?
Yes.
Alderman Kuhlmeier?
No.
Alderman Shuneman?
Yes.
Alderman Kleckler?
No.
Alderman Folsom?
No.
Alderman Sabaka?
No.
With the tie, the chair cast a vote in favor of passing the ordinance. So both of those have passed for first reading and will be with us in the next council meeting as well. Item 6 was pulled by the chair because Mr. Snow will be recusing himself for consideration to vote on this issue. Mr. Clerk?
Approval of ordinance 2017-2323, adding section 16-354, Class B liquor license.
Make a motion to approve ordinance 2323. Oh, I'm sorry, George.
Mr. Logan, beat you out, so Mr. Logan seconded.
That's fine, I'll second his motion.
There you go. Any discussion?
Yes, sir.
Yes.
This is somewhat different ordinance than was brought to the ordinance committee. I assume it's going to accomplish the same thing.
Yes, sir. After having a conversation with Mr. Reese, our city attorney, about what we discussed and the fact that we wanted to make sure that whoever applied under the ag would still have to go through the special use permit, in this case for campgrounds, excuse me. And that will continue here, and the only difference is we put it under Class B as a licensing rather than under tabloids.
And an additional question, where the definition talks about a 10-acre parcel, how is 10 acres determined? I mean, can you have whatever, 10 acres and one campsite, or are all the campsites put together equal to 10 acres? How is that necessarily determined?
That would be a definition, and I would refer to our city attorney on that.
The way that I determined that was by saying, well, what's a minimum size that you would want for a campground? And I would think it would be 10 acres. Maybe I'm wrong about that. If the committee thinks that it should be larger or smaller, you can do that. That was just a number that I came up with when drafting the ordinance, just because I felt that 10 acres would be a minimum size that you would want for anyone to be operating a campground within the city. Because understand that you're dealing about, you're talking about dealing with a campground within the city limits.
Right.
Okay. And so that was just something that I came up with. I couldn't find any specific authority in other law that gave me any kind of guidance as to what a minimum campground operation should consist of, so that's why I chose that. And if the committee or the council wants to change that number, you certainly should do. But if the reason that I chose to do it this way instead of amending the zoning ordinance is because you were talking about only issuing licenses to campgrounds. And so, if you put it into the zoning ordinance, then it makes a kind of a two-step process to go through, because now you have to get zoning approval for this thing, then secondly, you have to get the liquor license approval. There's already a liquor license approval process within the ordinances, and that is the mayor, the liquor control commissioner, controls, who gets that, and they have to meet the criterion within the ordinance and state law to be able to get that. So I felt that the best way to handle it would be to just create another classification within that class that had to deal with bowling alleys and restaurants and so on, and to try to define a campground in there as being an additional classification within that area. And that simplifies the process, plus puts it into the jurisdiction of the mayor and the liquor control commissioner, as opposed to trying to get the zoning and planning commission to be making decisions about whether or not somebody should have a liquor license. Because I didn't think that was really their bailiwick and their forte. It's the mayor that's the liquor or control ordinance, or liquor control commissioner that should be making those decisions.
But going to the 10 acres versus saying, somebody says I have a campground, they have one lot there, this makes it within the city limits.
Is there's a campground that's in the city limits now, 10 acres or larger?
Yes, 17. Yeah. And anyone that would go for that campsite declaration still has to go through, if they're an ag, would still have to go through the special use process to be designated to that before they could do anything else.
Yeah, to get it, to be enlightened, to be allowed to do a campground.
So the motion's been made, seconded. Questions been answered, any others? Roll call, please.
Alderman Reitzel?
Yes.
Alderman Logan?
Yes.
Alderman Snow?
Recuse.
Sorry. Alderman Kuhlmeier?
Yes.
Alderman Shuneman?
Aye.
Alderman Kleckler?
Yes.
Alderman Folsom?
Yes.
Alderman Sabaka?
Yes.
Seven aye.
Next item is the ordinance is for second reading and adoption, two of them this evening. Clerk?
Adoption of ordinance 2017-2314, amending section 34-480, adult uses, changing the definition of massage establishment excluding State of Illinois licensed massage therapists.
I move for adoption, 2017.
Second.
2314. Motion by Mr. Reitzel, seconded by Mr. Kuhlmeier, for the adoption, second reading and adoption, excuse me, of ordinance 2017-2314. Any further questions?
I was concerned about the wording, and the wording as presented lays my concern. So, I seconded that motion because we didn't want to have the other type of massage parlor downtown.
Very good, sir.
We had enough trouble with the adult bookstore.
I've had a few businesses in Rock Falls, once this passed, can they right away come in and file for an application to, how long does this process take, they ask, from the time the second reading has been adopted?
It'll be adopted, it's part of the...
Because the people that we're speaking of, that we put in here specifically, have to be licensed by the state of Illinois, not by us.
Correct. But they'll need a license.
Yeah, we'll just have to add a category to our computer system. Yep, that's fine.
Thank you.
So motion's been made, seconded. Discussion, any further? Roll call.
Alderman Reitzel?
Yes.
Alderman Logan?
Yes.
Alderman Snow?
Yes.
Alderman Kuhlmeier?
Yes.
Alderman Shuneman?
Aye.
Alderman Kleckler?
Yes.
Alderman Folsom?
Yes.
Alderman Sabaka?
Yes.
Eight aye. Adoption of ordinance 2017-2315, amending section 32-122, bulk purchasers of water rates.
Make a motion to approve 2017-2315 for adoption.
Second. Motion by Mr. Snow, seconded by Mr. Reitzel, for the second reading and adoption of ordinance 2017-2315. Hearing none, roll call, please.
Alderman Reitzel?
Yes.
Alderman Logan?
Yes.
Alderman Snow?
Yes.
Alderman Kuhlmeier?
Yes.
Alderman Shuneman?
Aye.
Alderman Kleckler?
Yes.
Alderman Folsom?
Yes.
Alderman Sabaka?
Yes.
Eight aye.
Thank you, Eric. City Administrator, Ms. Byacker.
All right. The first issue I have is regarding the limestone building. I have addressed this issue in public property, and they advised me to bring this to the full council. As you remember, in May, this council passed the draft of the intergovernmental agreement. Well, actually, it was before May, but we completed our public comment period in May, and as such, I informed the Illinois EPA after our last council meeting. The next day, I informed them that we had met all of our obligations and requirements for the revolving loan fund, and as such, I wanted a timeframe from them for receiving the final IGA for signature. After that, we had scheduled, and we did not hear anything from them. I did not hear anything from them from that inquiry the day after the last council meeting. Two weeks ago today, the mayor and I had a conference call with US EPA Region 5, and were brought up to speed on several issues concerning the revolving loan fund, which, as you know, is pass-through money. It's actually federal money that is passed down through the states and is supposed to be given out directly to the cities. We've been informed by the US EPA, and they also acknowledge that not only have we passed and completed all of our obligations to the Illinois EPA, we're the only entity in the state of Illinois that has done so at this point. We're the only entity in the state of Illinois that has been given the IGA, the draft of the IGA. And they encouraged us to reach out to the Illinois EPA and say, what is the deal? We also were told by the Illinois EPA that, as you guys remember, when this started a year and a half ago, when we first had the rug pulled out from under us, we were told because the state of Illinois had not passed a budget, that there was no appropriation for them to pass that money. We found out that that is absolutely not the case. That money is sitting in an account in Vegas, in the federal repository, where all the federal EPA money sits. That's when, for our assessment grant, that's where we get our reimbursement from, is that account in Vegas. The state of Illinois does not need an appropriation ordinance to have that money taken out of that account. They currently have $3.4 million, I actually have it down to the penny, that the US EPA gave me that was in that account. $3.4 million in that account. With the current administration in the White House, the threats have been made that the EPA funds will be cut drastically. As such, any state that has not used those funds, those funds will probably be swept back into the treasury, the federal treasury, in September. The state of Illinois also has another fund that has $2 million in it. That fund is actually the revolving loan fund. The money that we paid back to them for our loans that we've received from them in the past goes into that fund. So they're sitting on $5.4 million that they are refusing to give out to anyone. Taking the US EPA's advice, I reached out to one of the bureau chiefs at Illinois EPA. I called and talked to him, very nice man, told him what was going on, he said he would look into it and get back to me immediately. That was the Friday before Memorial Day weekend. I told him we were under deadline with a demolition company that is under contract with TerraCon if we were going to have this done this summer, and I needed to know by last Friday. I did not hear anything, so I sent an email out. I did CC the US EPA on that email, and had still not heard anything on when we should be expecting our IGA. The US EPA did reach out to us today to see if the state had responded, and I told them The US EPA, their only tool that they have to try to get the state to move is to threaten them with pulling the money. But pulling the money doesn't get it to the municipalities like us that they know deserve the money. And so they really don't have a lot of leverage. Hence, we're at this point. My recommendation is that we go ahead with the demolition. We thank the Illinois EPA for all the help that they have given us in the past, which they have. We have a very beautiful riverfront that between the Illinois EPA and the federal EPA, we've used a lot of those dollars. So, my recommendation is we thank them for their past help, and we say, let's go ahead and do this demolition. The terms of the IGA, if you all remember, the document that you were given, has to, we're going to have to pay it back. If any part of that poverty is sold, we're going to have to pay back that revolving loan in full. There will be no forgiveness of it. 30% will go away. As a matter of fact, we've also heard talk that not only will the forgiveness go away, they are considering charging us interest, which is unheard of on these revolving loans. So if we're going to have to pay it back anyway, we will never get a bid as low as what TerraCon got for the demolition of that limestone building. We will lose that contract, and we will end up paying more in the long run. Right now, currently, as of this time... Right now, currently as it stands, since much of that roof, the remainder of the roof collapsed over the winter, if a storm would come through and part of a wall would crumble, all I could have our city crews do is barricade off the lower dam. They cannot go in there and clean it up. They can't go in with in loaders and scoop it back and get it out of a safe distance. They can't touch it. That's under asbestos mitigation. I have to have certified demolition people go, or certified asbestos people go in there and deal with that cleanup. And I just think the time has come that we... It's approximately $175,000 that it would cost us. We do have the money in the general fund reserves. It does not take us under our balance. So that is my recommendation that we just go ahead and move forward and complete the assessment for that property. We have $160,000 remaining on our assessment grant. The US EPA has said they understand the circumstances. They are going to extend that out for us probably another year and give us till mid-year next year to have the assessment complete and we'll go from there. But I think if we keep waiting, we're not going to gain anything in the long run. I think we'll actually lose.
The other thing I'd like to add really quick is that one of the other caveats with this was that if the building got tore down under the state's monies, that for nine years...
Nine years.
Nine years, we could have done nothing but made it a public space. And we have developers right now that are advertising the property on national websites. And so another caveat of this is that by doing it this way, we don't have to adhere to that. And if the right people come along and want to talk to us about developing that area, we can go ahead without any roadblocks to have to jump through. Ms. Logan, you're going to... Ms. Logan is going to speak.
I think that the city administrator's recommendation is the right way for us to go. I'm not so sure, though, that I am as comfortable telling the EPA, thank you for everything that you've done because I...
The Illinois EPA.
Exactly. But I don't know that we should be quite that nice. In fact, I think maybe we ought to have Mr. Reese looking at that and see what, if we've got any options as far as they're concerned. But I don't see any reason not to move forward with demolishing the building properly. We've got the best bid we could ever possibly get for it and I would make the motion to go ahead and do that.
I'll second that motion. Question by Ms. Logan, seconded by Mr. Kuhlmeier to go ahead with the demolition process and have the city of Rock Falls cover the cost. Mr. Kuhlmeier, did you have...
As finance chairman, I can assure the council that we can cover the cost of it. But as a time is of the essence, I think we should go ahead with it.
I did receive an email right before 5:00. TerraCon has been in contact with green demolition today and the tentative start date, although it's not what we wanted, since the centennial is going on, we have a tentative start date of July 10.
At this point in time, we can work around all of that to rid the community of this size sore and ongoing nemesis that we've been putting up with. Any other... Mr. Kluckler.
I guess I'd only have one comment to make on this. And I think if any of the people out there that are listening to this have any contact with their state representatives, that they should express their displeasure. And, you know, at a minimum, there's been thousands and thousands of wasted dollars on this process. And if you even go to the larger states, we could say, it's cost the citizens of Rock Falls hundreds of thousands of dollars, which, in my opinion, they should not have to be paying for and that money could be used for other projects.
One more comment.
This minute.
You know, this was an unsatisfactory response of the Illinois EPA, but in the past, to give the devil he do, so to speak, they have provided a lot of support and help in clearing the riverbank of the pollution that it had. So in some respects, they have done a lot of good for the community, but this particular project hasn't been a good one.
They're very dysfunctional right now as a whole. So and it's not just us, it's just, it's very dysfunctional right now.
I will be sending a letter, regardless of how the vote goes, I will be sending a letter to Senator Durbin, Senator Bustos, Representative Bustos, I apologize, and Senator Duckworth, because they have all had an interest in this, what's going on from the US EPA side. And Senator Anderson and Representative McComby here at the state level will be hearing as well and they've, I've kept them informed of what's going on as well. And I hate to say it, but it seems like it's over their heads as well. So and they will be here on the 15th next door for a coffee session, so I'm sure they'd love to hear from all of us. Any other discussion? Motion's on the floor for the approval of 170. You'll make it.
Well, we're in a contract. There are a few caveats that we've got to work out because with the actual price, I may have one more adjustment in there. So I don't have a full price, although that contract is actually with TerraCon. I basically need to give them the go-ahead.
Okay.
I don't have a formal contract right now.
Right, I understand.
We just have to give them the go-ahead through TerraCon.
Keep it at $176,000.
Yeah.
Roll call.
Alderman Reitzel.
Yes.
Alderman Logan.
Yes.
Alderman Snow.
Yes.
Alderman Kuhlmeier.
Yes.
Alderman Shuneman.
Aye.
Alderman Kluckler.
Yes.
Alderman Folsom.
Yes.
Alderman Sabaka.
Yes.
Eight aye.
All right, number two, I'm sorry, people, I'm spending money tonight, so... Number two is to request any and waive any bidding on the purchase of approximately 15 miles of fiber optic cable and conduit. It's not the installation, it's actually just the materials. And I'm doing this more for an informative thing so you guys will know when some large bills start coming in for some of the materials that we're going to be buying for the broadband.
I'll move that permission be granted. Second the motion. Motion by Mr. Kuhlmeier, second by Mr. Shuneman to waive the bidding on the purchase of approximately 15 miles of fiber optic cable and conduit. Questions?
Nothing except... I'm sorry.
Right.
My question would be on, I guess, just simply why?
Because the most crucial thing about fiber, the price is more consistent. We're going with 288 fiber. It's probably going to be between $5 and $6 a foot, maybe somewhere around in there. Anyway, it's, the price over the industry is not widespread, what, or doesn't have a big spread on it. What the deal is, is the delivery. We're about, if we want to start construction on this in September, it needs to get ordered now to be here. Some, so you might have a, he says 60 days, everybody else is saying, yeah, figure 90 days to get it here. If we're looking at starting the week after Labor Day, it's got to be ordered. If we go through the bidding process, it'll be fall. It'll be, it'll probably, considering government moves at a snail's pace to go through the bidding process, and we don't have to. Statutorily, we don't have to on the product. On public works projects, the installation of it, we will have to.
But are you, you don't have a particular vendor right now that you're asking for permission to contract?
Right now, what we're trying to do is get delivery dates. It's the same fiber.
You're going to be coming back to the council with a specific vendor at a specific price, I would assume, because you don't have a contract at this point. You're just saying waive bidding, but, you know, unless the council's willing to give you and Dick Simon the authority to spend whatever amount of money you want to spend, I don't... I'm not trying to put you on...
I'm not intending on bringing it back to another council meeting. That's why I'm asking for the waiving of the bidding so we can get this ordered this week. We need to get it ordered this week.
But from whom and where, so that you have an authority for a contract at this point?
I'll bring it back to you in two weeks.
No, I mean, if you know, that's okay, but...
Well, this is just to actually order the product that we're going to use in September, right? Fiber, the acting of fiber, 15 miles of fiber.
I mean, it has to be a very large price. If $5 a foot.
Yeah.
I mean, I think that's where some concern is, is knowing what that dollar value is going to be, yes.
Well, the council can give the superintendent and city administrator the authority to enter into a contract to spend not, to exceed X amount of dollars on fiber from whatever company they choose, to meet standards, but what I'm getting at is just waiving the bidding process is not agreeing to a contract. And the contracts for cities are usually adopted and approved by the council unless you give the authority to a department.
But can we talk about a sales contract?
What's that?
This would be a purchase order. This is a claim to be a purchase order. This is not labor installation.
It's a contract. They're all contracts.
Parking hall.
They're all contracts. It's a contract to purchase something like this. And anything that the city buys is a contract. Anything that the city does is a contract. And I'm just throwing out to the city council that you have two ways to go. You either grant the city administrator and city electric superintendent the authority to spend X amount of dollars to buy the fiber optic from whatever company they choose, or it comes back to the council to approve the actual terms of that agreement to buy at some later date, one of the two.
Within the, within the financial plan, what was...
The money was passed from the fiber optic.
I know. I'm asking, what is the dollar set aside for fiber optic?
This could be somewhere around half a million, wouldn't it?
It's all that added equipment, the 40 volt LEDs, the fiber conduit, all of that, is that 1.3 million is what we got here. When you're buying two miles, you're, we're going to get a discounted rate on the amount of it, but still the concern is the delivery date and the price. Price is not in there yet.
So will the maker then, to coincide with what's being suggested by the city attorney to the council, will the maker set a limit not to exceed $1.4 million? Because that's over the boat, the fiber, correct, Robin? Right. That's over, yeah. $1.4 million for the maker? I don't think we had a maker, did we?
Alderman Kuhlmeier.
Alderman Kuhlmeier.
Yes. I think we should set, because it really, time is of the essence in this whole thing and getting the bid and getting it installed, so, yes.
You're only talking about doing this with the fiber, the 15 miles of fiber optic cable, right? And if you're...
And conduit.
Of the what?
And conduit, too.
And conduit.
Yeah.
Is all of this $5, $5 a foot or... I just, I just ran, I ran the rough numbers and you're talking... I was just trying to get an idea. 15, 15 miles at $5 a foot is $396,000.
No, it's more than that. It's like $2,300,000. 50 miles.
15 miles.
15. 15 miles.
$5,400.
5,280.
I'm sorry, you're right.
15.
I'll add to that one quick. All right.
He had the legal fee in there with it.
I'm not, I'm not mathematically...
You don't want your attorney...
So if we go to 1.4, it's way under that, we're okay. I'm not an accountant. With the conduit. Mr. Kuhlmeier, you mentioned a motion to not to exceed $1.4 million. Right. Will be way under. That's important that we understand.
Because of the mileage.
Second.
Second, Shuneman. Shuneman already seconded.
But he had, he had, yes. Okay, any further discussion? Thank you, Robin. I mean, true.
I think Robin's done such a great job so far with everything else she's presented us with, so I don't think she's going to do us wrong on this deal. I want to ask you guys a question. I mean, we need to keep an eye on this broadband. We really do. I mean, and that's why when I'm sending out the accounts, the accounting to you guys every month, I started including the broadband. You know, we're going to have to keep an eye on it. We're going to have to make sure that they can sit up with the program and the business plan that we set aside. You know, and we are. We're doing our best to do that, but thank you.
I don't think anybody's questioning anybody's ability to do anything right or wrong. I mean, it's just what our attorney says. If we have to say it this way, then say it that way.
Okay, so the motions have been made. Motion's have been made and seconded. Is there any further discussion? Roll call.
Alderman Reitzel.
Yes.
Alderman Logan.
Yes.
Alderman Snow.
Yes.
Alderman Kuhlmeier.
Yes.
Alderman Shuneman.
Aye.
Alderman Kluckler.
Yes.
Alderman Folsom. Alderman Sabaka.
Yes.
Eight aye.
That's all tonight, you're on.
Thank you. Ms. Cerdini.
I have one item in your packets, is a copy of a thank you card from the Sauk Valley Landlord Association for the citywide cleanup. Thank you for their, thanking the city for their sponsorship of that. And that's all I have tonight.
Could I add something at this time? Just a short thing. I see Sharon is in here and she may in the future come up with a little bit more of an update, but, I mean, I don't know where all this trash is coming from for a cleanup deal. I mean, we all, we shipped out a semi-load, that'd be 52 pallets of TVs, the day of the cleanup, and we still have another semi-load to be shipped out as soon as they can receive that on there. And we went over on, what do I call it, solid waste. Last year, we used two of those 30-yard dumpsters. This year, we used three 30-yard dumpsters. The scrap metals that came in, last year, we used one dumpster. This year, we used two dumpsters on it. I think the only thing that went down was oil this year and that we had about 200 gallons of oil. And we were still in the, in the area of 300 to 400 cans of paint and tires. We just went by like seven trailer loads of tires and there was probably 50 tires on each trailer that went out. So we were about the same on tires again, but just amazing where this stuff is. But story, and I still had, and as people have seen, there was still TV sets and tires being dumped off the following weekend left around, so...
I want to make sure that we, she's not here tonight, but I had my list, so I'll just run it up to thank Sharon and Mr. for all the work and along with Mr. Kluckler and the other some members of the association for doing this. Yeah, where does it all come from? That's a good question.
My garage.
Mr. Reese. Apparently, I've said enough tonight.
Let's check his bill when they start coming in a little...
Man, that's a purse.
Mr. Frickensky.
Yeah. Those trips to Florida have been a little...
I would like to, before we move on to department heads, just take a second. DeShawn's here from the Salvation Army folks. You missed the proclamation part of it, but will you come forward and accept the proclamation and be approved?
Anything for a picture.
Mr. Cass.
Not here.
Mr. Simon. Wise decision. Chief Cook. Mr. Siri. Mr. Fidella. Mr. Spink. Dan. Dan, of course. I knew I should have skipped him.
Pretty hard to get 100%.
I know.
Well, on Thursday, June 15th, if you see a whole bunch of bicyclists in our areas because the Grand Illinois Bike Tour will be coming through. They start in Byron, they go to the Quad Cities, they drown and come back. They have one overnight stay at the Holiday Inn Express this week.
the organizer, he says, "I want to know about all things Rock Falls." So, I created a special little brochure just for those that are staying, staying at the Holiday Inn Express and Suites. And I gotta say, they have 68 rooms. 67 of them are being, are reserved for the Grand Illinois Bike Tour.
Wow.
And what did you call it, break to, the grand what?
Grand Illinois Bike Tour.
Grand Illinois.
And then, coming up at the end of June, we have Bass Pro Shop, Cat Quest, and the Rock Falls Outdoor Show, right next door, Summer Splash. Ours is the 24th and 25th, Saturday and Sunday. Friday night will be the registration. Registration is at the RB&amp;W District East Patio. Same place and same times as last year. This year, what we're gonna do is have seating right across from the weigh-in, seating up to 300 people. The outdoor show should be a lot of fun. We also have Bo's Bait and Tackle. They're going to be at the weigh-in. They're gonna be there Friday night for when we have the registration. And they're also going to be there Saturday morning, starting at 4:30. So, any other fishermen that, if they haven't got their bait on Friday and are looking for bait on Saturday morning, bright-eyed and bushy-tailed, both days, Saturday and Sunday, starting at 4:30. And they will remain open during the entire tournament. There's no late registrations, $200 for two-day, or a two-person team. And if you're still thinking about it, you can wait up until Friday evening and sign up. Any questions?
What about the boat races? What do you know about that?
Those are on July 8th, along with Touch a Truck. And, let's see, and I don't have the information with me, other than it's July 8th, July 8th and 9th.
Starting 11 o'clock both days. They'll have time trials before that. The racing will start at 11.
And it's great for this year, since the sidewalks are finished, Riverfront's almost done. People are encouraged to be at Bull Seward Park. And they can watch the races from the park. And if you're staying at the hotel, then you have a bird's eye view from the bowels.
Nice job of filling in for the other department heads. Word reports, Mr. Reitzel?
I'm the crew of the Sauk Valley Association. I'm our solicitor. Thank you.
Mr. Logan?
Happy to be here.
Mr. Kuhlmeier?
Yeah, I have a couple of things. Earlier this evening on the five o'clock and six o'clock news, Channel 8 had the interview for the Riverfront, which I think was a beautiful interview. And they'll probably have it on the 10 o'clock news as well. So, I think that we were well represented in it. They did refer back to what the Riverfront looked like before. Also, Alderman Schuneman and I attended the Black Hawk Hills Annual Banquet. And I'd like to congratulate Alderman Schuneman on receiving an award for the storybook trail at that annual banquet.
If I would have told you, you'd never would have went with Glenn, would you?
Yes, I would have gone with Glenn. I'll go anywhere with Glenn.
Mr. Snow?
Nothing, your honor.
Mr. Schun?
I have two things.
Were you glad the award?
No, the award was nice. It was a nice surprise. Appreciate that. But it really goes to the trails committee. They're, they're the ones that did the work in the Illinois Extension. Mary Nelson, she's the one who does all the work. Two things tonight regarding the trail, I have been remiss. Couple months, it's been at least two months since our fire department, guys went out and put the markers on the canal. And I just wanted to say thanks to them. Gary, I know you're, you, you send that along to the guys. But if you've not been out on the canal, there's a marker every quarter of a mile. And they're bright yellow. And, and every time I'm on the canal, I ask people about them. And they're just happy to see those things out there. And it's not only, not only to informational, to see how far you're, you've gone, walked, rode, road run. But it's, it's also a safety thing for if people are out on the trail and, and they get sick or they have an injury, the mile markers are there. And it allows the rescue people to get to them a lot faster. So, it's dual, kind of a dual thing. But they're real noticeable. So, I wanted to thank our guys in the fire department and, and Bill Milby for, for doing that. Second thing, and this comes off of Facebook, so I'm not sure how reliable it is. But I, I know I mentioned Jake Junis was called up and then sent down. I heard on Facebook that he's, he's actually starting a game tonight for Kansas City. So, I just wanted to pass that along, because I knew he'd be back. So, congratulations to Jake and, and the family. That's all.
Mr. Kleckler?
Nothing.
Mr. Folsom, glad to see you back with us. Hope you're feeling better. Hope your wife's feeling better.
Nothing tonight, your honor.
Pretty good. I'll make mine quick. If you've got your pencils, papers, a few dates for you to make sure you have in your books. Coming up on this Saturday, June 10th, will be the grand opening of the Farmer's Market. That'll be at nine o'clock in the morning up at the Farmer's Market area, 9:00 to 12:00. As I mentioned to Britt earlier, on June 15th, that's a Thursday, from 9:00 in the morning till 11:00 in the morning, over here at the Community Building, State Senator Neil Anderson, Representative Tony McComby will be there and having a coffee, as they did over at Sterling. They'll be here doing the same thing. People can stop by and say hi and share any, any comments or concerns that you may have with them. For those that may or may not have an interest, on Monday, June 19th, that is what is called Juneteenth Day at the YWCA at Sterling, starts 4:30 in the afternoon. On June 26th, this is an update on the twin, twin, or the Consolidated Dispatch Director has been hired. Employees are going through the hiring stages now. And at the meeting today, the new dispatch center will go live on June 26th at 6:00 in the morning. For the people at home, you'll not notice really any change. Dial 911. People will be answering your calls and the appropriate agencies will be dispatched. But that'll be on June 26th at 6:00 in the morning, where it'll start. I know it's a bit in advance, but July 4th, our first council meeting in July happens on a holiday. So, we will have it on Wednesday, July 5th, at the regular time, Wednesday, July 5th. And it was already mentioned, Touch a Truck on Saturday, July 8th, and the River Chase on both the 8th and 9th. Also, please mark on your calendars, I know it's in advance, July 24th, 10 o'clock in the morning at Seward Park, we will be opening the time capsule for the Sesquicentennial. Got that one right there? Put on your calendars, because you all are invited. On Wednesday, July 26th, I know these are out there, but I want you to be aware of them. That will be the day of 1:30 in the afternoon that we will be having the RB&amp;W Riverfront dedication. And you'll be receiving information about that as well.
What time is on the 24th? Did you set that worth, the time capsule?
10 o'clock in the morning at Seward Park.
Are you gonna actually open the capsule or just dig it out of the ground?
We're digging it out of the ground. And then Sterling Rock Falls Historical Society will be there. And we're going to open it up and at least take a look into see-
Need to call Muse or what it is.
Exactly. Yeah. And then we'll take it somewhere to be laid out, in case it's wet or whatever. But we'll work. And we truly evaluate, or excuse me, appreciate the Sterling Rock Falls Historical Society working with this. They've been a great partner in these events. And then, that's enough for tonight. But that's a lot. So, please try to reverse, reserve some of those dates. I know that as an Alderman, you folks put in a lot of time at these meetings, at committee meetings and stuff. But these are some of the other things. It's nice to see people out in the valley, in the community, on the public level. So, if you can make some of them, please do. If nobody else, we have nothing for executive session tonight, since Janelle messed up the department head thing. So, entertain a motion to adjourn, moving adjourn. Mr. Reitzel? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
opposed?